According to my daylight saving time watch, it's seven o'clock on Monday, March 15th. And we will call to order the regular city commission meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Bospus-Rath.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Talentino.
Here.
Commissioner Twardy.
We did hear from Commissioner Twardy, who is not able to make it this evening, but Commissioner Baker should be here. So we need a motion to excuse Commissioner Twardy.
I'll make that, Your Honor. Make a motion to excuse Mr. Twardy for this evening's meeting.
Support.
Been moved and supported. All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
City manager, I'm assuming that number two new agenda item is a typo?
Do you see? All right, where am I? Where do you see?
Number two, it says new agenda item, but I think it's just the template that you used. Maybe it got stuck in there?
I guess, yeah, that's, that wasn't supposed to be there.
All right, so if we could all rise and mute our microphones, Commissioner Miller will recite the Pledge of Allegiance for us, with us.
Thank you, Your Honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. And item number five, mayor comments and general announcements. Just a couple of comments. Last week, we passed the one-year anniversary of COVID-19 in the state of Michigan. We've all had a difficult path, I think, with this. And we've learned a lot about government, good and bad, at all levels. We found out that medicine is not always exact. And we've certainly seen a lot of different variants of human nature. But in times of need, certainly people step up. And this community has done very well. We have been consistently the lowest in COVID-positive rates per million of any county in the state of Michigan. And that is from day one and forward. And I know that everybody has done their part and they've stepped up and it's very impressive to see. The unknown in the beginning certainly was difficult. And as we got to know what we were facing and had kind of a path forward, I think we can't thank enough the healthcare professionals that have helped guide us through this, the people from the Chippewa County Health Department, War Memorial Hospital, all of the emergency services professionals, all the essential employees that have been at every single business in town and kept it open and made sure that we had services and products. I know that we had a difficult time with paper products about a year ago, but certainly feels good in this day and age to have all the supplies that we need. And certainly, we have to thank all of the local units of government that worked together to get information out and worked with the hospital and all the emergency services coordinator from the E911 Chippewa County Emergency Services Coordinator. And certainly couldn't have done it without the help of our two tribes, the Sioux Tribe of Chippewa Indians and Bay Mills Tribe. They helped with coordination. They were there from the beginning. They helped with testing supplies and they certainly have helped all of us to obtain vaccines. Got some information from the Chippewa County Health Department, which I think is interesting, and Chippewa County is certainly a leader in in getting vaccinated because of the help of the tribes. Chippewa County Health Department has administered over 9,000 total doses, and that's just them. Sioux Tribe has administered over 6,700. Bay Mills, over 2,630. And War Memorial Hospital, 2,222 total doses of coronavirus vaccine. That puts our percentages for people that are age 65 and over at 57.6% that have had one dose of the vaccine. And 38.9% of our 65 and over residents are fully vaccinated. 24.3% of Chippewa County residents have had one dose and 16.2% of Chippewa County residents are fully vaccinated. So I think if you look, and I know that we have Dan Gray on here, but to our neighbors to the north, certainly their numbers are not as impressive when it comes to the vaccines. So we've been very lucky and, and I think on behalf of certainly this city commission and administration, we'd like to thank everybody that's been involved and supportive in the, in the last 12 months of this COVID-19 crisis. Be proclamations and recognitions. This evening, we have none, so we'll move on to item C, which is public comment. Is there anybody online tonight that would like to speak to any of our agenda items after the city manager has explained them? So anybody?
I'll just follow up on what you said, Mayor. Up here, just to give you guys an idea in Michigan, what you guys are looking at doing 16 and 17-year-olds. We just started doing our 80-plus category. So what you guys have pulled off down there is absolutely amazing.
And we might have a different discussion when it comes to opening the bridge, maybe now.
We'll, we'll talk.
So certainly, thanks for your comments, Dan. And we wish you luck and certainly we hope that everybody gets vaccinated on your side as well. We have a great relationship with Sioux Ontario and we want you to be safe. Anybody that would like to make a comment on any of our agenda items this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to item D, which is the consent agenda and Deputy City Manager, Robin Troyer, somewhere on my screen here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, one, approval of the city commission meeting minutes of March 1st, 2021. Item two, acceptance of the airport authority board meeting minutes of February 11th, 2021. Item three, acceptance of the brownfield redevelopment authority meeting minutes of February 9th, 2021. Item four, acceptance of the downtown development authority meeting minutes of February 10th, 2021. Item five is acceptance of the Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes of February 9th, 2021. Item six is acceptance of the planning commission meeting minutes of February 25th, 2021. Item seven is acceptance of the resignation of Rachel McCoy from the Economic Development Corporation. Item eight is appointment of Bob Shalopp to the airport authority board for a term to expire January 1, 2025. And appointment of Angela Zubak to the airport advisory board for a term to expire January 1, 2023. Item nine is consideration of a continued resolution of commitment to fund M dot small urban project. Item 10 is consideration of an updated MOU with the United States Coast Guard to provide fire protection for the U.S. Coast Guard CGC Buckthorn while more net base. And item 11 is approval of the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Would any city commissioner like any of the items further explained or any of them removed for individual consideration? Seeing none, Commissioner Baker, would you like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to move to make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions or comments from any of the commissioners? Seeing none, roll call, vote, please.
Mayor Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Bospus-Rath.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Item E, special orders of business. City Manager Brian Chapman.
I think, Mr. Mayor, up first tonight is a consideration of a brownfield plan for the MAC building. There will be a public hearing for this one. Depending on how the mayor wants to handle it, we do have the developers' brownfield consultant on with us tonight. He can give a brief recap or synopsis of the project prior to the public hearing, or would you prefer it after the public hearing?
Oh, let's hear it first, I think would be good.
All righty. Mr. McClelland.
Great. Thank you very much, Brian. My name is Mac McClelland. I also had the honor of assisting the Brownfield Authority and the city in the Lake State Sea Free Project Eagle Grant, and I'm now assisting the McClellans in terms of the project, the redevelopment for that. And I see that Brian is helping me show my screen. But you have that up, Brian, or you want me to?
I got it up for you.
Okay. There's a few clicks through, so I'll just kind of lead you through it a little bit, but kind of in summary, the MAC building redevelopment has a number of extraordinary costs that really require financial support to be economically viable. It just was, doesn't make sense with all of the cost, environmental and non-environmental, to proceed with a project that can't be economically viable. And so kind of the, the best way to do that is utilizing brownfield tax and financing capture that provides for the reimbursement of those extraordinary costs through capture of increased future taxes. You really generate and enlarge the pie, provide the dollars to reimburse those extraordinary costs. In order to capture state taxes, which represent about 40% of the total tax bill, they require an equal contribution of local taxes. Because the building is in the TIFF2 district for the DDA, the DDA has been approached and has approved an interlocal agreement with the Brownfield Authority to forego the additional capture just on that building to support the project. So local and state taxes will go towards reimbursing those project for the project. It actually kind of means that the city is getting a 40% state grant in essence over time to help support the project. As Brian noted, a public hearing in Brownfield Plan is approval is required by the city commission. And one important note is that we're in the process of applying for another Eagle Grant comparable to the Sea Free Project that if successful will cover many of the eligible activities here, reducing the obligation for local taxes and putting the the building back on the tax roll much more quickly. This is sort of a worst-case scenario if there's no dollars that are available. Just a quick company overview, the developers McClelland Realty, their principals are Carol McClelland, the owner, and her son-in-law, John Metric. They've been involved in, if you can go to the next one, Brian, thanks. They've been involved in the Sioux for a long time. Started in 1964, ran the H&R Block business in the 70s. Really expanded in 1976 to Frankenmuth Fudge Kitchen. They acquired the, this building, the former Chris Laundry in 1985. And the family operates nine candy stores across Michigan and operates 11 buildings along with a strong online sales operation. So they have good ties to the Sioux as well as a strong business approach. I think you all know the site. It's the 411 West Portage Avenue. It was the former Great Lakes Laundry and Chris Laundry site. They're located across from Sioux Park as well. And does represent those properties there along the area. It includes the back building as well as the, the original Chris Laundry building. It has undergone some renovations and some great renovations recently, thanks to the city's support for a facade improvement grant. So there's been some significant changes to the building already. It basically was a, was a project that Carol's husband had for a long time in mind, could never quite get around to it. He unfortunately passed away, but Carol has committed to carrying on his memory to renovate the the MAC building and named it after him and proceeding on as well. So it has been vacant and underutilized for a very long time. The future plans are to take the 13,000 square foot two-story building. The first floor will be commercial. The second floor will be 10 market rate residential units. There is, does have to be an addition of an elevator and stair tower at the south end of the building along with site improvements, basically redoing the full site that's there. You can see the site plan again. It's the existing building there. Reutilized, the stair tower is proposed on the south end of the building, but essentially the site will remain as it is with the number of site improvements landscaping and will really be dressed up significantly. Again, the first floor proposed right now, kind of depending on what market are and what tenants need, but proposing to have four units there. They may be combined. They may work out some couple storefronts and others there as well, and the 10 units in the upper level. There is a requirement to find a public benefit to the project, and this project does align with the master plan goals and objectives. It includes revitalization of a historic building, expanded commercial space, and bringing residents to the downtown increases private investment and tax revenue and will create jobs as a result of the commercial operations on the first floor. So Brownfield TIFF, and I know the city has gone through a number of Brownfield TIFF projects, but Act 31 of 1996 provides for the reimbursement of certain activities, brownfield eligible activities on certain properties, brownfield eligible properties through the capture of those future increased incremental taxes generated by private investment. So it is all about what are the activities to be on the site, how much is going to be invested on the property, how much of those taxes going to grow? And how can we repay those extraordinary costs? As part of the process, a Brownfield Plan is prepared and approved by the Brownfield Authority in the city commission. And as I mentioned, because the DDA captures local taxes, except for the intermediate school district, an interlocal agreement between the Brownfield Authority and the DDA is necessary for the Brownfield Authority to capture taxes. I just want to also suggest, and is noted there, the estimated payback in eligible activities, and again, this is with no Eagle Grant, is 18 years with five years for the local brownfield fund. I just want to reiterate that there is, that schools are held harmless in this. Any state taxes that are captured are made up by the state education fund to the school districts. There's no loss for the Sioux-Same Marie School District. And a recent amendment to the act was passed that makes the intermediate school districts whole as well. So they'll be reimbursed from the state education fund for any capture. So schools are held harmless in this. This kind of gives you an idea of the tax capture allocation. Again, the, the DDA captures the city library, county and county taxes. It did not capture the ISD taxes. So this basically provides an increase or an ability for the city and the Brownfield Authority to capture state taxes and, as I mentioned, have a state grant of about 40% over the, the life of the project. This just gives you an idea. This is sort of a cycle of how the, how the dollars work on this. If there is no improvement on that site, these are where the taxes lie over time. After the investment is made on the property, the taxes rise significantly. But again, because of those increased eligible activities, and again, worst-case scenario, the capture does extend for about 18 years. And so that gives you kind of a visual reference of that. The local brownfield fund can capture and you can capture state taxes as part of that brownfield fund equivalent to the amount of dollars captured for environmental activities. So you're able to bring in some additional state dollars to help remediate projects throughout the city as well. And then after that point in time, this is the 30-year period of the Brownfield Plan, but the state and local taxes accrue on that property over time and can, and then continue on for the, for the life of the project. I will also say that debt millages are not captured, so the capture for the, for the school debt millage is not captured and will accrue back to the schools as well. So there's kind of two categories of the brownfield eligible activities, environmental. And in this case, because they've owned the building for so long, they didn't need to go through the baseline environmental assessment process. There's do care. There's contamination on the site. We did ask the question and unfortunately answer that there was a dry cleaner. They did, you do dry cleaning operations on that site. And so there is some significant level of contamination, which will require a vapor mitigation system to be installed underneath the slab of the building to exhaust those potential contaminants away from the interior of the building. Anytime we also dig in soil or do any kind of work that might be in groundwater and dewatering will also be necessary and appropriate disposal of those contaminated products will be necessary as well. So there are some significant environmental expenses there. This kind of gives you an idea about what the scope and value of those are. These are conservative estimates. They're high. The actual reimbursement would be based on actual expenses with invoices and waivers of lien and payment documentation that would be submitted to the Brownfield Authority that would lay out the actual amount that, that would be eligible. That second category are non-environmental eligible activity costs, including lead and asbestos abatement and selective demolition on the site. The basically, the building basically has to be gutted, the slab has to be removed. There's quite a bit of work to, to clean out the building to make it prepared. You know, all the HVAC and electrical has to be removed from the site as well. And also eligible are site preparation activities. So some of the dewatering activities, geotechnical engineering, any of the additional work that's necessary as well. So those are kind of the two main categories of the environmental costs that will be eligible for reimbursement. I will say that the Brownfield Grant does provide, Eagle does provide grants and loans for environmental response activities, asbestos abatement and demolition. This grant was the same that was used for the Lake State Sea Free Project as well. The Brownfield Authority is applying for an Eagle Grant for the MAC building project, and it would really cover all of the environmental asbestos abatement and demolition costs, which is really about 85% of the brownfield costs. We're quite hopeful for that, for that Eagle Grant. And again, that would mean that those costs would not have to be reimbursed through future taxes. And those costs, the tax value would go back to the taxing jurisdictions much, much more quickly than the, the previous chart provided. We have, have done some introductions to the project as well, to the Brownfield Authority as well as the Downtown Development Authority. The Brownfield Authority approved the plan on February 9th. I worked with Brian and to get the local, the notices to taxing jurisdictions to be out. The Brownfield Authority and the DDA approved the interlocal agreement on March 9th and 10th, respectively. Tonight, we're at the public hearing and the Brownfield, hopefully the Brownfield Plan approval by the city commission. We do have to submit a work plan, a specific work plan to, to receive state tax capture approval. And that usually takes about two months. So that would be the next step after, after this project. It's kind of in summary, the Brownfield incentives are critical to the project. And I don't think Carol would be able to proceed with these additional extraordinary costs. There is significant public benefit. We're pursuing that Eagle Grant like crazy. And, and again, the Brownfield Plan would reimburse those costs, not include in the Brownfield Plan. So the request for you, before you tonight, is to approve the resolution approving the, adopting the, adopting the resolution approving the Brownfield Plan. And happy to answer any questions.
Why don't we move on to our public hearing and then immediately after that, we'll have commission questions for you.
Great.
Very nice presentation. You had one different letter in your name. You could own that building, eh?
Yeah, we were searching back to the genealogy to see.
All right, so we will open a public hearing for consideration of the Brownfield Plan for the MAC building. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions that would like to speak at the public hearing? So again, we're opening a public hearing for the Brown, consideration of the Brownfield Plan for the MAC building on Portage Avenue. Again, a public hearing is open, so anybody that has any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing for consideration of the Brownfield Plan on the MAC building. City Commission, Commissioner Baker, do you have any questions or comments for city manager or Mac McClelland?
No, great presentation. Excited to see more apartments going in downtown. We need them. Thank you.
Commissioner Bospus-Rath.
A great presentation. I have really no questions. I'm excited. Thank you.
Commissioner Collins?
No, I'm all set. Thanks. Thanks. Commissioner Miller?
No, Matt gave a great presentation. It answered all my questions. I'm glad to see that building is getting put back to the way it was. It's a beautiful building.
Commissioner Talentino.
Thank you, Your Honor. Matt, great presentation. Good job on that. And I'm super excited to see some good quality marquetry housing coming downtown for us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Bospus-Rath, would you like to make the motion?
I have, I have a quick question, actually. Do I have to abstain or anything because of my family involvement? I don't know.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm good.
Do you have any financial investment in the project?
No.
Is that what you're going to ask, Brian?
Yes.
Okay.
You should be able to vote.
All right, I will make the motion then.
Okay.
Motion to approve the Brownfield Plan and corresponding resolution as presented.
Support.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any questions or comments before we vote? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Bospus-Rath.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes.
Mayor Gary.
Yes. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to item F, which is communications. City Manager Chapman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of communications tonight for the commission. The first one, we'll hear from Liam Dryer regarding government tomorrow, for tomorrow. Liam reached out to me a couple of months ago when we set up a quick presentation for tonight. He'll give an overview of his program and kind of what his pitch is to the commission. Liam, are you there tonight?
I am, yeah.
All right, sir. Why don't you just go ahead and jump right into it?
All right, perfect. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. So first off, my name is Liam Dryer and I serve as a non-voting student member on Charlevoix's DDA. I've served for about two years now and I kind of, about maybe a year in, I realized that my position was pretty exclusive to Charlevoix. And then I reached out to Boyne City, seeing if it was possible to incorporate other peers in the area. And then kind of one thing led to the other. Boyne City approved four boards in, in their city with the help of Government for Tomorrow, and then it kind of developed into a, a full nonprofit organization with its mission to be helping cities and schools create student positions in local government. So I think there's a presentation in, or like a little one-pager in all of the agenda packets, if, if that's, if that's correct. And I actually have a bit of an updated one because of how quickly our organization moves. Is there any way that I can share my screen, Brian?
Yep, hold on a second.
Okay.
All right, there should be a share screen button kind of at the bottom there.
Okay, yeah, this one's a little, little flashier and has more information. So are you able to see that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So basically, what Government for Tomorrow does, I kind of went into it a bit there, but we work with cities and schools to create student positions in local government. So we don't charge cities a dime and we basically go to cities and schools and help them implement youth into their community. We create non-voting student positions. So they're completely in an advisory role. They act just as a board member, but they're not able to vote. And basically, we're nonpartisan. And we implement youth through basically a three-step process. So it starts off with developing, which is kind of what I'm doing now. It's answering any questions from the community, maybe board members from the city commission, city council, or the DDA, or Parks and Recreation, or wherever you might see a student position, and basically convince the city of the benefits youth incorporation brings. The next step is finding, and this is definitely the most extensive and longest part of it. And it's us actually going to schools and it's a bit different during COVID. But for example, we made a small assembly in, in Boyne City and we did class-to-class in East Jordan where we're going from government to civics to to like AP US Histories to English classes, and we're explaining the importance of local government and just community involvement altogether. And then after explaining that and giving a presentation of kind of what each board does, we hand out applications and then once students fill them out, we hold individual interviews and once students fill them out, we hold individual interviews and we actually have a selection committee, a selections committee made up of Michigan community leaders who have volunteered their time to see a bunch of students who come before them and they make an objective opinion based off of, you know, extracurricular activities, it might be just speaking skills altogether. And we're normally working with someone from the city administration all through this process, so there's normally two recommendations, someone from the city administration and then Government for Tomorrow. Then we have implementing, which is the most important part of this process and it's not just us creating a student position and then leaving it, it's actually us going through and breaking down things like Robert's Rules of Order, maybe issues, important issues pertaining, in this case to Sioux St. Marie, how to represent high school peers, because the idea is not to put one student voice on the board, it's actually to bring a student consensus. So we kind of teach them how to communicate to youth, so they can actually bring like actual poll numbers to these board meetings and say, okay, I talked to fifty kids and forty, so let's say forty-three really liked this bench design over the other. It's a really basic, I see, I have done things like that on Charlevoix's DDA and we have at the moment doubled the amount of student members that were previously in Michigan before our organization and we have went through the same exact training process with all of them and we basically have this constant communication with the city, school and student to make sure everything is going well and about every month after, because normally local government board meetings are, you know, just about every month, we check up with all parties involved, make sure everything's running smoothly and that's basically implementing. So I guess the big question is, is why we do it and our general opinion is, is that more opinions means better decisions. So you're able to, as a city, be more confident in the decisions you make if you also have the youth opinion while making them. Next one is connection through engagement. Students will naturally feel more connected to a city if they feel like they have helped kind of build it up and create a foundation. And and obviously, this is, this is speaking to things that we can't know for sure, but if they kind of feel tethered to the city, they might be more inclined to come back to it later, who knows? And then the next one is really big, it's local government appreciation. And most people don't realize that the people you see on national television don't nearly affect your life as much as the people on your city council or your DDA or your Parks and Rec. Your day-to-day life is mainly affected by those people. And this isn't just students who don't realize this, this is adults too, because if you look at poll numbers, if if you're looking at poll numbers for, let's say, an election year with a presidential election, I mean, crazy high and then all of a sudden there's a local government election the next year and then the numbers are staggering low. We would like to kind of strike this early generation as they're going through high school to help them appreciate local government, show how much of an impact it has on their day-to-day lives. And who knows, maybe that will carry to later generations and who knows where that could turn out. So learning democracy is the next one and that is basically simply learning how this country was created. The the basic process of, you know, Robert's Rules of Order and possibly inspiring the students to take up a career later in their, later in their lives. The point of Government for Tomorrow is to create a very reciprocal relationship between the city and student. The city is gaining a student opinion, so they can be a lot more competent in their decisions, while the student is gaining, well, we like to say that it's the very best government class possible. Like there is no better government class, I have learned so much serving on Charlevoix's DDA. And and that's part of the thing, they're they're gaining, gaining an incredible, an incredible education that you can gain any other place and you're also kind of going through all these other reasons why we do it. So that is to give a very rough, kind of, this is like a pretty much a three-pager summary of who we are. I know it's, I know it's kind of short, but we have a website with a lot more thorough information, I just kind of wanted to give a very brief summary of what we do. And I'm sure you have a lot of questions and I'm more than willing to answer them.
Liam, will you pass the ball back to me, please?
Oh, yeah.
I think you're all, actually, I think you're all set.
Okay.
Brian, did you have any comments or?
Yeah, so, you know, from my perspective, whenever we have an opportunity to get some fresh blood, some youth involved in government, you know, I certainly want to try to take that opportunity and whether it's getting them on committees to hopefully create a new stack of people that would be willing to fill our committees or even the commission someday. Because there could even be a chance, you know, selfishly to maybe create or push out another city manager or two in that group, so. I always like to present opportunities like this, if this is something the commission would like us to pursue, like Liam said, there's no cost, there's real no obligation to us, we would just work with him and maybe get a few student members on some of our committees throughout the organization and you know, it's nothing really we have to take a vote on, but if this is just something in general that the commission would like us to pursue, just kind of on the side, then you know, I guess just a couple of comments and maybe some heads up and down will kind of carry this forward for us.
Why don't we, we'll go through the roll call, I just, I thought it was funny or ironic to hear you say something about pushing out a city manager.
Bad phrase of words there.
Now, we'll go through a roll call, I think this is fantastic and Liam, you should be commended for what you've done here. We've talked about doing this and I've never done it, so let's go through the roll call from top to bottom. Commissioner Baker, any questions or comments?
Just a few comments, I had the pleasure of seeing Liam present to the Rogers City DDA and I actually sent you an email, so if you are already on Brian's radar, that's awesome, so I am for this a hundred and eighty percent. I've been trying to, we talked about this, like you said, Mr. Mayor, several for times and over years and so it's nice to have somebody come in and take charge of it and have the responsibility for it, alleviates the pressure from the city and no cost, it's a win-win, so kudos to you, Liam, keep doing what you're doing, because we need younger people to run and local governments where you can make the most change, so kudos, good job.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Bospas Wrath.
Yeah, great job, Liam, love the presentation, I think, you know, it's a great way to get our youth excited about government. And just like you said, the more they're involved, the prouder they are, so I think, I think it's great, I'm completely backing this, good job.
Thanks, Commissioner, Commissioner Collins?
Agree with everybody said, great job, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner, Commissioner Miller?
Great job, Liam, that was a great presentation, this is a great program. And getting young people interested in this early is a is a great thing, I was interested in all types of city and state politics when I was probably your age or even younger. I do have one question for you, though, there's, there's no cost to the city for any of this, but who finances your program?
So we're nonprofit right now, so we just got our nonprofit status like last week. So we're kind of, you know, it's really hard to fundraise during during this time, but we're starting to try to come up with ideas to fundraise and, I mean, I think with the proper funds, this could become a Michigan-wide thing, yeah.
Well, you're doing great, keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner, Commissioner Talantino?
Yes, Liam, great job, good presentation and like stated earlier, this is something that we as a commission have discussed in the past. And I think it's nice that you can come in, do this for free, take the ball and run with it, it's a win-win, as Commissioner Baker stated, so good job, thank you, and I hope it works out really well for you.
Well, it looks like you have unanimous support and I think you heard their word free several times, so hopefully, hopefully keep going free.
Yeah. And and there's one, and there's one thing that would be very helpful to us as an organization, one of the hardest things is making first contact with an area school. Would, if anyone would have any type of connection to an area school, that would really give us a head start. It's possible to cold call, but during COVID times, it's really hard to make a first connection if you don't know someone in the school. So would anyone have, now that there's kind of a go-ahead to start contacting students and making presentations, does anyone have a type of connection there?
Sure, Commissioner Baker's got her hand up.
Yeah, I get ahold of you, Liam, I can put you in touch with people at the school, the community foundation, all the youth activities, youth groups, all that.
Thank you, yeah, okay, perfect.
Good job, welcome to the Sioux. Under F, Communications. Did we move, is Commissioner Baker's item moved into Communications, City Manager, is that?
Yes, no, it should be moved up.
Okay, all right, so number two. Take it away, City Manager, if you want to introduce.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Baker sent an email this Tuesday requesting a discussion for allowing retail and micro businesses in the downtown district. And with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Baker.
Thank you, I wanted to bring this before commission for discussion and in hopes to refer this back to the city administration for them to give their report. We have gone through the DDA, NEPER was adamantly and admittedly not advocating for this in any form. We've, the DA's put out a survey that half the people downtown building owners, not just business owners, building owners did not receive. As you can see, the taxation of marijuana, they started releasing funds to those communities. Now, if we would have had the five retail shops that are going in now, last year, our community would have gotten over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, we're talking about bathrooms all year round, no problem. Cutting into that big gap in the polar that we have. We really, in my opinion, need to take a hard look at this with the empty buildings, with COVID, there I highly doubt, I'll be shocked if we see another restaurant open in the next ten years. Our retail shops also struggle due to the internet, so any more traffic that can be driven downtown, the better. Also, keep in mind, once this, once it goes federal, which it will, depending on which way the federal government decides to go, whether it's just decriminal, decriminalization and then letting the states handle it or if the federal government says, yeah, we were gonna make some money and we're gonna tax it, everything that the states put in place is moot and gone. So all the taxation, all to back to the communities would be gone, once it goes federally legal. So we need to capitalize on that money while we can, there is, we need money, that is a hand and we have tons of empty buildings downtown and storefronts. And again, with COVID, seeing more businesses come in, it's gonna be even a bigger struggle. And on top of that, keep in mind those restaurants and whatnot, in the future, you'll see beer-infused beer with marijuana, you'll see weed, you know, the restaurants doing it with their foods. So we need to give our local businesses and building owners every opportunity that they can, especially now during COVID. So I really hope that we have some good discussion tonight and ultimately send it back to Mr. Chapman to come back with a plan for zoning and ordinances within the downtown district. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, City Manager, any other comments before we go out for Commissioner comments?
No, I mean, this is something that we can do, at least put in a report together, talking about the impacts, making a recommendation. If we do want to force the DDA to kind of push it down on them and just see what their recommendation would be after we review the staff report, we can certainly do that and then bring it back up for permission action shortly after that, so I mean, it's nothing we can't handle from the staff that's here right now, just to have the discussion, put together some recommendations and bring it to the two boards for DDA would be input and then commission possible action.
All right, let's go down through the Commissioners and Commissioner Bospas Wrath, any thoughts on this item?
Um, I would like to see just a report, I know that that one that went out didn't ask everybody. I was in Traverse City a couple of weekends ago, there are a lot of pot shops, I guess you might want to call, I don't know if they all were, because I didn't go in any of them, but there were a lot of them. And then I did see some in Petoskey this last weekend as well. I would like to see a report to, to bring it downtown, I'm on the fence about that, so I know we've got five coming uptown. So I would just like to see a report before I give a full opinion, I just need to do more research, so thank you.
All right, thanks, Commissioner, Commissioner Collins?
Oh, thank you, yeah, I agree with what you said earlier, I'd like to refer it back to the DDA and get a report from the administration. I don't want to limit ourselves to not allowing them downtown, one of the things that I think about is, is that, is it gonna, is it something that can draw people downtown and help out the small businesses? And if we don't allow them downtown, is that going to hurt the downtown area? So therefore, that's why I want to get more information on it, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner, Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor, I think I've made my opinion abundantly clear about drugs in our community, throughout this whole process, so I don't really have anything to add, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner, Commissioner Talantino?
Oh, I'm all set on this, Your Honor, thank you.
Okay. And I, yeah, I don't have honestly an opinion one way or another, but I think that the DDA needs to be the entity to bring this forward to us, so really do want their input, I don't think that we should make a decision that the DDA is not looking for, certainly would support referring this back to city management to work with the DDA to see if maybe there's a better survey tool or to talk to the DDA board to see if, you know, in my feeling, I guess, if if they don't feel strongly enough that we need it downtown and they don't bring it forward, then we probably don't need it downtown, so. That's my opinion, short of it. Commissioner Baker?
Yes, from being a liaison on the DDA board, I can assure you that this, they've done, they've gone through what you're asking for several times, but have done it very poorly. And the longer we wait, it is a disservice to our taxpayers when we could be making a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue. So I would really, I think the DDA just needs to be out of it completely and it should be solely on the city administration to come back with a report and a recommendation. The DDA has, I think they've done at least two surveys in the last two years that were horrible and yet we continue to wait on the DDA and we had a DDA director who was adamantly opposed for personal reasons and he admitted so, that has been on the board, been running it for that long. So again, I think it really should be back on just the city administration to come back with a recommendation to the city commission. And they can work with the DDA board, but it should come from Brian and the city administration.
All right, so. Go ahead, City Manager.
I, again, I don't have an issue putting together the report, I mean, it's working with Community Development Director Freeman, it won't take that long, we'll be able to put together a staff report. And I mean, we can do a couple of things concurrently in terms of getting into the commission for review and even getting into the DDA board committee for review as well, so I mean, I think we can do a couple of things for the same thing here.
All right, well, I think that information will be necessary for us to even discuss this further, so.
Thank you.
I don't think we need a motion and vote, do we, City Manager, just go ahead and do it, okay?
Nope, we're good, we'll handle it.
Thanks, Commissioner, for bringing that forward. Moving on into G, Business Items, number one, City Manager Chapman?
All righty, thank you, Mr. Mayor, up first in business items tonight is the consideration of bid for the siding and roof job at the Berega House. This was a project that was originally budgeted for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Given the historic nature of the homes, we have worked with an engineering firm to make sure that we're keeping it consistent and what we're looking at can actually be beneficial to the homes. We originally bid this project, the fall of two thousand nineteen, we did not receive any bids. So we put it on hold, we recently rebid the project and the bid that we received is included in your packet. So we would look for two motions for this particular project. Motion to approve the contract with the not to exceed price of twenty-four thousand three hundred, then a motion A motion to approve the contract with a not to exceed price of $24,300, and then a motion to increase the project budget as stipulated in the agenda item.
Any reason why we're not getting bids on these? I mean, it looks like pretty easy, non-complicated job, I should say.
I could speculate. I think part of it is, this is just a small project, and, you know, why go after a small project when you got a bunch more bigger fish to chase around? So, maybe it was timing on a lot of different issues. It just did not come to fruition that first time around.
All right. Commissioner Collins, any questions on this one? Commissioner Collins, any questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
No, Your Honor, thank you.
Commissioner Talantino?
I'm all set, Your Honor, thank you.
Commissioner Baker?
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Boskus-Rath?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Collins, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. I got to get right to the right place, though. I just went to the next one.
It's kind of a long motion, too. Sorry about that.
No, that's all right. Let's see.
G1.
I'm sorry, say it again?
I didn't, G1.
Oh, yeah, I got, I got the right one. All right, ready? All right. Motion to approve the contract with Fairview Construction and Roofing LLC of St. Mary, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed $24,300 for the removal replacement of new siding and painting of wooden siding for the Bishop Barrick Historic Structure on Water Street. Support, oh, sorry.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments on that? That's two motions, correct, City Manager?
Yes, sir. Yes, there's a motion to execute the contract and a motion for the budget adjustments.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Boskus-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Commissioner Collins?
Motion to increase the project budget from $20,000 to $24,300 and transfer $4,300 from the operational line items in the general fund as described below.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Boskus-Rath?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. We're currently in the longest meeting we've had in months, and we're only halfway there, eh, City Manager?
If you guys need an intermission, we can take one. I don't want you guys to get meeting fatigue.
I think we're good. G Business Items, number two. Did you need to take a break?
No. We're stretching.
Okay. Item number two, City Manager.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next for Commission Consideration is a big project here. We've had their eyes on it now for the last couple of years. A consideration of an MDOT grant agreement for the Power Canal Project. This particular item has two motions, motion to authorize the manager to execute the contract, as well as a motion to revise the budget to recognize the project will be done in two phases. So, as the Commission has been aware, this was a big public project here. A lot of people had their eyes on this one. Prior to city engineer Boyle coming on board with us, there hadn't been a lot of movement on this project. Dave came on board and really picked up this project and, you know, saved it and kept it moving forward for us. So, incredibly grateful to him for doing this. The project, because of the delays, have been broken up into a Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One will be constructed this summer. That will be Portage Avenue to Ashman Street along Sheridan, as well as Phase Two next summer, Ashman Street to Johnson Street. So, we're really, really looking forward to getting this project moving here and seeing some of them done this summer. So, again, we look for two motions, motion to authorize, execute the grant agreement, and motion to revise the budget.
Thank you, City Manager. Commissioner Miller, any questions or comments on this item?
I'm just glad to see this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Talantino?
I'm all set, Your Honor, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Baker?
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Boskus-Rath?
Yeah, I'm just excited about this one. Thank you.
Commissioner Collins?
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. I know there will be a lot of happy people in the Sioux to see this one start moving ahead. And Commissioner Miller, would you like to make the two motions?
Sure, thank you, Your Honor. Motion to authorize the city manager to execute the Michigan Department of Transportation Grant Contract Number 20-5513 for the Power Canal Shared Use Path Phase One.
Support. Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Boskus-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Commissioner Miller, the second motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to revise the budget for the development of this project in two phases as presented.
Support. Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Talantino?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Boskus-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing this move forward. G Business Items, number three, City Manager.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next for Commission Consideration is a request to approve the contracts and the budget for the Salmon Runway Relocation and Parking Lot Construction Project. This is a major component of the Seafree project, as well as the city's Carbide project. What the relocation of Salmon Runway would do is put in a new road that would basically tie in both facilities to Portage Avenue. There is a cost sharing agreement with LSSU for consideration. It is part of the project. This project has been another long, very strenuous project. Again, same as the last project. There wasn't a lot of movement on this project prior to Mr. Boyle coming on staff with us. This was another one that he's put in a considerable amount of time in salvaging the project for us. There was a little bit of a hiccup with this project before the new staff came on board. There was a previous LSSU bid for this project or this grant to which MDOT denied because only an Act 51 Local Unit of Government could do the bid work for the project. So, there was some miscommunications, some mishaps that happened a couple of summers ago on this project. Again, we got it back on track here. So, we would look for two motions tonight. Motion to approve the construction contract with a not to exceed amount of 381114, then a motion to establish the budget based on the source's use as presented.
Thank you, City Manager. Commissioner Talantino, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm all set on this, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
All set, thank you.
Commissioner Boskus-Rath?
I'm all set, thank you.
Commissioner Collins?
I'm all set, thanks.
Commissioner Miller, any questions or comments?
All good, Your Honor, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I know that we all received a correspondence a week or two ago from the other unsuccessful bidder, but I think the City Manager answered those questions appropriately, and the city was, of course, had to use the state process, and their bid was seven and a half percent over the successful bidder, and it wouldn't have probably mattered had it been within the 5%. I think City Manager had said that because of the city or because of the state bidding process. So, certainly good information from Burton Excavating. They're a well-respected excavator, and I know they're doing a great job on the Seafree project, and we appreciate their work and all the work they've done for the city in the past. And so, Commissioner Talantino, would you like to make the two separate motions?
Sure, Your Honor. Make a motion to approve the construction contact Tobacco Construction Company for the Salmon Run Relocation and Parking Lot Construction Project in the amount of $381,144.55 and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Support.
Any, been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor.
Commissioner Collins, did you have a question?
I just wanted to make sure that I heard that number right, the $381,114.55.
It sounded like $144 to me.
That's what I thought, too. That's why I just wanted to make sure.
So, it's three.
He doesn't have his glasses on, so.
But I got contacts now.
Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Boskus-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Commissioner Talantino?
Motion to establish the project budget based on, as is project and source as presented.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Boskus-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner?
She's on the Robin.
Did you hear me? Yes, I heard you. Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes. Motion passed unanimously. I guess we're all getting punchy after this hour, bitwishing hour, so. G Business Items, number four, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next for Commission Consideration is a request to waive the bidding process and approve a professional services contract for the 2021 Bridge Inspection and Load Rating work that we have to do. So, MDOT requires the city to do some work on their bridges every two years. We have some money that we originally budgeted for that we will be pulling for, so this is a capital project that we previously budgeted for. We're asking the Commission to suspend the bidding process so we can use the contractor that we typically use, which would be Ayers. Normally, the work that they do is under the $10,000 threshold, so it would be something that could be approved at my level. But the state is asking us to do a little bit of extra work this year, so their fee is going up a little bit over the $10,000. So, we would look for a motion to suspend the competitive bid process, as well as a motion to approve the professional services contract with Ayers.
Thank you, City Manager. Commissioner Baker, do you have any questions or comments?
No, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Boskus-Rath?
I'm all set, thank you.
Commissioner Collins?
All set, thanks.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes, Mr. Chapman, explain to me why we're waiving the bidding process for this?
This is our typical bridge consultant, and the only reason why this work is coming before to you is because there's extra requirements that MDOT is requiring us to do this year, which is increasing their fees. So, in absence of that additional work, this wouldn't even made it up to your level. We would just approve the contract. It would have been under $10,000, and we would have continued to use Ayers. Ayers is our bridge inspector, they're our bridge consultant. They're set up on behalf of the city with MDOT to be able to do this type of work. So, for us to, you know, go out and bid a service that we have a contractor that we've been using for years to do, have to rework all of our systems, and maybe not even achieve that big of a savings, just isn't really worth it at this point, so.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yep, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Baker, would you like to make the two separate motions?
Sure. I'll make a motion to suspend the competitive bidding process for the work as the current consultant Ayers is the MDOT engineer of the, of record on M bridges for these inspections, and has provided these services for the city for many years.
Court. Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please. Excuse me.
Commissioner Boskus-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
Make the motion to approve a professional services contract with Ayers and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Court. Has been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Boskus-Rath?
Yes.
And motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on, G Business Items, number five, City Manager.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, next is a request to enter into closed session, discuss collective bargaining. We have three contracts that are open that would be expiring June 30th, 2021. Staff and I need to go into closed session with Mission to discuss the negotiations and get authority. So, we look for a motion to, the motion as presented.
Commissioner Boskus-Rath, would you like to make that motion?
Sure. A motion to enter into closed session as presented.
Or just, just a quick point, too, there will be no action taken after this item, or after we, after we get out of closed session.
All right, has been moved and supported that we move into closed session at the end of this meeting and not return. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Boskus-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Passed unanimously. After this conclusion of this meeting, we will move into closed session and not return into normal sessions, so. Item H, City Manager, announcements and updates. Looks like you've got one on there.
I got two written down over here, so just real quick, the citizen surveys. We did work on a citizen survey with the LSSU students. That is going out this week. We're sending about 1,200 surveys out to, what would be in total about 5,400 residential houses. We took a sample of 1,200, so we're sending out 1,200 rat surveys. They'll be out for a few weeks. They'll start coming in. LSSU will compile and analyze the data and create a report for the Commission, for Commission's review. So, keep an eye out for that. And just as a reminder, we are tentatively scheduled to go back to in-person meetings April 1st. With that, we will have to maintain proper social distancing and all those other restrictions. So, right now, staff and I are looking for a large enough venue to maintain six-foot distance between everyone. We're trying to figure out how to do the video conferencing or the recordings for it. We may be taking a step back in what we do and maybe a little bit primitive for a little bit, but those are just some of the things that we're working on right now. So, just right now, tentatively, kind of prep yourself to return to in-person meeting. I think it would be the April 5th Mission meeting, so. Other than that, I have nothing else at this time.
So, no word from your partners at MML on whether or not they're going to extend the authority for us to meet remotely?
They're working on it. They're pushing the legislature, but it's, it's hard to say if they'll be able to get it through with the governor opening up certain sectors and kind of pulling back her own restrictions. It's tough to say if that's something that will be viewed as necessary by the legislator. We can do Zoom meetings in the future, but it's limited to certain criteria. Somebody would have to be on military service, hospital leave, or a local declaration of emergency would have to be put in place by the local unit of government, so. So, yeah, there's a chance. I don't know how good of a chance it'll get pushed to the legislator, but they are the state and government fairs. People at MML are pushing and working for it, so we'll see.
Thank you, City Manager. Does anybody have any questions or comments for City Manager on his items? And I'll ask Commissioner Talantino, because I skipped him on the last item. Any questions or comments? Uh, now you're muted. Uh, now you're muted. Nope. Okay. Anybody else? Any questions or comments for city manager? Commissioner Miller.
Mr. Chapman, prior to the meeting, we talked about the date of March eighteenth at ten AM. Is this, what did, what did you figure out about that?
Yep. That's what that's supposed to be our tentative goal setting. I'll send an email out to everyone here shortly. There was some pre-work that we were supposed to do. Um, I'm not sure where the state of that is. So I will review the surveys that are coming in and see where we go from there. So I will text you, Commissioner Miller, and not email you.
Be- because this is like in three days, eighteen.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, city manager. Uh, moving into item I, matters presented by the public. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make any comments at this time? Please unmute your microphone and, uh, let us know your name and residence. So anybody in the audience that would like up to five minutes to speak in front of the commission?
No, I'm just checking something with, with Brian. Brian, does that mean you guys won't be via video for a little bit after April first?
Uh, correct. Yes. And there's, there's a good chance that it may not have a live feed component to it. Um, but we're trying to figure out. We just don't have a lot of, our commission meeting is really small. We may not be able to meet the restrictions, but I'll keep you in the loop, Dan.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan, for, uh, being here and, uh, covering our meetings. Anybody else? Also, thank you to Taylor, who is here from the Sioux Evening News as well. We, uh, have some great, uh, media coverage and we really appreciate it. So. Anybody from the, uh, public that would like to make any comments at this time? All right. Seeing none, we'll move into item J, which is matters presented by the city commission. Commissioner Baker.
Um, yeah, I just first, uh, after much consideration, and this was not an easy decision to come to. However, I feel like I have, I need to do what's best for my family and myself. And therefore I am resigning as the city commissioner of Sioux State Marine effective immediately. Um, I didn't get into politics, become a politician. I got into politics because I wanted to make positive changes to my community. And I learned very quickly, it's not easy as I thought it would be, nor do things move as quickly as I would like them to. Um, but as my business continues to grow and I work with many other communities throughout the state and hopefully the country, I would not want that to conflict with any city business. Uh, would never want to be thought of as a self-serving politician. Therefore, resigning, I believe, is the best decision for myself, my family, and for the city of Sioux State Marine. Rest assured though, guys, I will still advocate for my community and keep you all, my former commissioners and the mayor accountable and keep keeping the community informed. I will continue to volunteer, join boards, help make progress throughout our community for the better, and I will still be a voice for the Sioux. It'll just be in a different capacity. I've learned so much from this experience and I will forever be grateful for this opportunity to serve my community. And although I did not make all the changes I wanted, I am very proud of my work on this commission and the progress that I did help bring to the community. I want to quickly just thank my family for their support the last four years. It is definitely harder. It was definitely harder on them and myself than I ever thought it would be. Being a politician is not for the faint of heart, but they've always stuck by me and supported all my crazy dreams and for that, I'll forever be grateful. Uh, second, I want to thank my constituents for their love and support. God knows I would have not made it this far, even close to four years without their support. And I, uh, promise I will continue to advocate for you and the betterment of our community. And I'll be able to do so without the constraints of being on the commission. Uh, I would also think, like to thank you guys, my fellow commissioners and the mayor for their service. It's been quite the wild ride. Mr. Mayor, I've always respected you for being a true leader and an example, especially for us newbies, uh, coming onto the commission. To me, you were always very respectful, even during a teachable moment, and I really, really admire and appreciate you for that. Uh, I'd like to thank the city manager and the city administration for all their hard work. Truly excited to see what Brian does in the next five years, especially with our Parks and Rec, Brian. Uh, he has a vision. That's right. He has a vision for the future, which is key, and the betterment of our community. Robin, God bless you. Thank you for all your help guiding me the last four years. And I know that you guys will continue to move the Sioux in a forward progress. Just keep doing it for the betterment of the community in their best interest. Parks and Rec, guys, get it together, please. Thanks. That's it.
Well, thanks, Commissioner. Uh, certainly it's a surprise to all of us and, uh, appreciate the kind words, uh, to all of us serving, uh, the city commission. It's, um, yeah, it's a labor of love. We know it's, it's, uh, very difficult, uh, to be in the position and, and you see a lot of different things and, and, uh, you certainly get a different perspective, uh, perspective of it. And, uh, you know, I didn't even know you really before, uh, you came to the commission, uh, looking for an appointment and certainly has been a pleasure to get to know you. You are uh, an extremely creative person and your enthusiasm, uh, is, uh, certainly there. And, uh, when you say that you're going to, uh, keep, uh, on us and, uh, let us know which way we need to go, I, I have no doubt and I appreciate that. And, um, you are persistent and I, I really like your, uh, you know, your community-minded attitude. And, uh, you certainly are driven individual. I can see by the, um, blackboard behind you with all of the tasks that you got going on. You're, and I know from speaking to you individually, you're busier than heck. And I certainly appreciate, uh, you know, this decision was probably extremely difficult for you, but the right one for you, right one for your family. And I know your constituents will understand and, and I think, uh, you know, we've, we've had moments of, uh, agreement. We've had moments where we didn't agree and, uh, I like differing viewpoints and, uh, you know, I like to be challenged and I, I think you bring that for sure. And, uh, it, uh, hate to see you go, uh, but you gotta do what's best for you. So, um, wish I had more canned prepared notes, but, uh, thank you for your service. It is a sacrifice for sure for you and your family and, and you've put in the, you know, the, just about the full term. Had we not just changed the terms, you know, the extra year wouldn't, uh, be there. So, uh, thanks for everything and thanks for your service and, and we'll go around the table, I think, uh.
Appreciate that.
Comments, uh, questions, maybe comments? So. And then, uh, after, uh, we're done, then I think we'll defer to city manager Chapman to maybe, or maybe you want to pipe in right now, uh, Brian and, and let us know, what the process would likely look like and what we'll be discussing actually at the next, uh, city commission meeting.
Some of the commission members have been through this before. Um, whenever there's a commission resonate, a commissioner that resigns, there is a process that's dictated by the charter that we must follow. Um, part of it is the requirement for thirty days notice or not, excuse me, not thirty days' notice, thirty days to fill the vacancy. Um, so what will happen is Commissioner Baker officially resigned tonight. Commission will take action on it at the next meeting, which would be April fifth. Um, from that day forward, we'll have thirty days to move with the, uh, filling of the occupants or the filling of the vacancy, excuse me. We will put out a, at the next meeting, when we take action on, on the resignation, we'll have a process for commission to, um, consider. There's been different paths. I believe the city has done, um, either through appointment and interviews and appointment. I believe at one point, if it hasn't happened, there certainly talks about just going back to the last voter roll and taking the next highest bid. I don't have a preference right now, but as we analyze it, we'll make a recommendation with the commission. Um, the term for the person who was appointed to it will be billing Commissioner Baker's open seat, which would be about a year and a half until the next election. So we'll have more information for the commission in the coming days. That's kind of it in a nutshell.
All right. Thank you, city manager. So other commissioners and, uh, matters presented by the city commission.
I just want to wish Commissioner Baker good luck. Hey, you know, everything you do, you seem to go full steam ahead and, you know, it's, if it's in front of you, you're going to go grab it. You know, Abby, you and I have had a really good working relationship. Uh, it's been solid, no BS. You know, we tell each other exactly the way we feel and we respect each other for that. Uh, so that being said, good, good luck with your future endeavors. You're going to do a hundred percent. You're going to do gangbusters. Good luck. And I'm sure we're going to hear from you again.
Yeah, you will, Tim. You will. But I appreciate that greatly. Ditto on all the sentiments too. Really liked, enjoyed working with you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Commissioner Bospus Rath. You might want to.
I was good until you said my name.
Want me to go first?
I was really good. No, I got it. I got it.
Want to type in the chat box?
Abby, you and I go way back. And I love your passion. We've had great talks and, um, gosh, you're just, you're a shining star and I know you're going to do amazing. So good luck. I know we're not gonna not hear from you. So.
I appreciate that.
You know you can. Um, yeah, just best of luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My turn, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Jody, you are your father's daughter. Go ahead, Commissioner Collins.
All right. Thanks. Abby, you know how I feel about you. Um, it's best, definitely been a pleasure working with you. I'm sorry to see you go. I know that you have to do what's best for you and your family and I wish you the best of luck and I'm sure that we will be in contact.
Yeah, absolutely, Greg. Thank you for always, uh, being my financial guru on the commission to always go to for those questions and, and others too. So I appreciate working with you greatly.
Anytime, Abby. My pleasure.
All right. So. Well, Commissioner Baker, would you like to, uh, make the motion in your last official meeting of?
Yes.
Anybody else? Any, uh? Looks like we're ready to, you're all, okay.
Yeah, make a motion to go into closed session for you guys because I'm out.